Jacksonville. Oh, I'm running for Jacksonville North Pulaski School District Zone Four.
All right, we'll go ahead and get in with the questions. Clarissa and I will alternate in the questions and you want us to go first?
Sure.
All right. And since it seems like you're the only candidate here, feel free to elaborate as you need to because you do have time.
Okay.
First question, what do you see as the school board's role and responsibilities?
Absolutely, I feel like the road of the school board is to be advocates and representatives of the community. That means the taxpayers, the students, the staff, and the students' parents as well.
So knowing that, what is your motivation to run for a school board?
My motivation starts with my passion and my love for children. I've worked a lot in the community with children of all ages. I believe that they're our future and anytime that we pour into our future, we're pouring into ourselves and our communities as well. I've been a resident of Jacksonville for a year. I immediately became involved with different organizations within the community in Jacksonville. And I learned about the, the reading levels that the children are on. I learned about the desegregation business that the, you know, the judge has ruled for the, these schools, the promise of these schools being built. All of that, along with my passion for children, made me want to be a part of providing the best education for the students in Jacksonville that I can and to be a diverse person that brings my experience as well.
And.
I gotta follow up.
Yeah, go ahead.
With you stating that you've been in Jacksonville for one year and in that year you essentially hit the ground running as being an active member in the community and in civic organizations, what is it that motivates you to do that?
Let me just tell you that I had the opportunity to be an AmeriCorps member. And working with AmeriCorps instills an absolute drive in you to be a part of your community and to be the change that you seek. And I absolutely believe that anywhere that I lay my head is a part of me. And I absolutely have to be a part of making my community better. I actually believe that that's what we all should do.
Awesome. Well, I'm excited to hear that because I'm a cohort, so you're my cohort, AmeriCorps.
All right.
Once AmeriCorps, always.
Always.
Yes, and this kind of goes into the, a question a little down the line that we had. You spoke about it, but if you could bring a little detail to what your vision for education in the Jacksonville community is? What are some of the things as it relates to education you'd like to see?
Absolutely. First and foremost, I would like to see all of our students' reading grades go up. I would like to see support for all students regardless of their learning styles. Reading isn't just fundamental. We have to read in order to be able to pass the test. We have to read in order to fill out a job application. We have to be able to read well in every aspect of our life. And it is our duty to make sure that these babies are ready for tomorrow.
Thank you so much. And I saw Jasmine, who was another alumni, was.
All right.
In, on that same vein, so what do you believe we need to do to attract and retain good teachers that can help you towards that vision of making the reading scores on all levels go up?
Well, absolutely, we can't be afraid of change. As a community, we cannot be afraid of change. I know that sometimes it may be seen easier to just be comfortable and do things the way they have always done, been done. But our, our report card, and I say our because I'm a part of this community. I feel like I'm responsible for this report card as well as a community member. Our report card is not satisfactory. And, and we have to do something about that. We owe it to our children and the future of Jacksonville.
Um, let's see, and I appreciate those answers. And so we're gonna, we're gonna move on to one of the other questions. How would you handle the request if approached by a member of the community? Or, and this is a, this is like three questions in one.
Let's do the first one first.
We'll do the first one. How would you handle a request if, if approached by a member of the community?
Definitely, if that request is made to me and I'm outside of Kroger's, and I will take that minute to listen to that request and note it. If it's something where I'm not able to address it at that moment, I will refer them to my personal email. I do plan on having a, a social media page where those questions and concerns can be answered. I will try to answer the questions to the best of my ability. And if I can, I will bring it to my board members. That's another reason, and that goes back to your question about how do we retain teachers? We have to listen to teachers. I've worked inside and outside of the education system. And I know what it's like to feel unheard. I know what it's like to work without enough supplies and to come out of my pocket. We have to listen to the teachers and the staff and our community as a whole. All questions are important.
The second part is special interest groups.
You had a three-part question.
Well, no, this was it. How, how would you handle the request of the special interest groups?
And tell me more about what you mean by such special interests.
A special, special interest group, say like a, a particular bus company comes to you and say, hey, we need to sit down and talk about because we want to do X, Y, Z.
Definitely, in that situation, I still want to listen. I want to know what the people are thinking about. You don't know how much untapped resources we have sitting right here in Jacksonville right now. So I'm definitely interested in knowing some thoughts or ideas that someone has. I know that I am not in the position to make those decisions alone, and I would take those to my board accordingly.
And the third part of the question is teachers. How would you handle the request of teachers?
This, the exact same way, it's important. The teachers are what make the momentum go around. And I'm not just saying that because I was a special ed paraprofessional for 14 years. They really are the backbone of how this big entity runs. And we need to listen to what they have to say.
One thing that I saw that was very important or actually heard, I didn't see it. But one thing that I heard that was very important in your, your answers was your ability to stop, look, and listen, and your ability to go to your board and say, we need to deal with this. So I think it's very important that we bring that up. So what, what do you?
No, no, I was, I was, I was trying to keep my computer from going off.
Okay, I thought you were trying to get my attention.
No.
All right, so how do you handle a situation where the board makes a decision? And maybe they make a decision where everyone votes one way and you know in your heart of hearts that everyone should not have voted that way and you vote the other way. How do you handle that decision moving forward that you were opposed, opposed to, but everyone else was for?
Well, listen, I believe the, the purpose of having a diverse school board is so that we can get those different perspectives about certain situations. I definitely will not agree to something that I think is harmful or not in the best interest of our children. And if I have to move forward on a decision like that, you know, I would have to search further into what I can do on the outside as just a community member to help that situation. See, I believe just because I become a board member, that doesn't mean that my work out here on the streets are finished. I still owe my community the opportunity to give me their concerns, let me know what they're dealing with, and for me to try to help.
Okay. Next question, what kind of relationship should a district board or districtal board have with its community? With its parents and families, the teaching and classified staff? I think you answered a little bit.
She just started.
Yeah, you answered some.
I have more to say.
You just threw a softball through the fuse and ran.
Oh, definitely, the school board has to have a relationship of trust with the community. We have to be transparent. We can't make decisions in the middle of the night. We have to be there and show and, and let them see what we're doing at all times. The board is a representative of the community. And so with that being said, we serve the community. They're not doing us any favors. It's our job to serve them, and that's what I'm liking that.
Speaking along those lines in serving the community, when you serve the community, you're, once you get on the board, you're only going to be having, what do they mean, twice a month, right?
I believe so.
So you're only going to have a meeting once every other week, so twice a month. How are you going to deal with what's important when you're only meeting? You're not meeting that, that much?
I agree that two times a month, especially with all the concerns and that we're dealing with this year, seems like not very much. But that's just the board meetings. I think that's when that reaching out to the.
Theresa, you're muted. Theresa? Is it us or did you go?
She went out. Her audio went out.
Okay.
Oh, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, that's when those other things come into play. And being present, being present and out there in the community. That's how I can take care of just one or two hours in, in a boardroom. Being out there with the people and seeing the concerns and hearing them. The best time I had, and you did tell me that I could go out a little longer. The best time that I had was being out in this community and talking to the people. They didn't know me. You can tell by my accent that I'm not from here. And I was really pleasantly surprised by, number one, this community is more aware, I think, than people give them, than, than we give them credit for. I talked to parents. I talked to parents that were Jacksonville alumni. They lived their whole life here. They went to Jacksonville. They send their kids to Jacksonville. They want change. They want a board that is going to do what they say they're going to do. And they want equality and, and, and reading and math grades to be raised. And I agree with them and I enjoyed the conversations.
Now, and this, this actually flows into this question. And you were talking about, you know, talking with parents, talking to board members. How, how do you, how can a board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out? How do you know that?
One thing I think that walkthroughs are always important. We need to be in the schools that we serve. We need to show up and see with our own eyes what is going on, you know, with the day-to-day. Also, through data. If we are doing what we say we are going to do and it is working or failing, that data that's collected is very important. And that is how we find out and can measure our success.
And speaking of measuring success, what do you think is the most important responsibility or responsibilities of the school board?
To be fair, we need to make sure that we are coming from a place of not, of not our own personal bias. We have to use the facts, the data, like I said. We have to look at what has not been working and actually put things in place that we can try to help. Now, I'm a big thing for AI kids reading because any support that we have to help our kids is important. These are the things that need to be implemented and that will help us in the long run, I believe.
And, you know, being advocates ourselves, we know about and facilitators about workshops and trainings and how important that is to have. And for boards and people who make decisions for our children and our communities to, to be versed in. So my question is, are you willing to attend workshops or trainings to learn how to become an effective board member? A, a school board? And the incumbent board members, we, we wish that we were able to maybe get these questions to them so that they could describe any workshops or training that they have attended during their tenure. But since it's, we just have you, we, we, we would like to hear if you've had any trainings, and that's a good start. And then, are you willing to attend workshops and trainings?
First of all, absolutely, yes, I'm willing to retrain, to attend any workshops or training. I am a law, a lifelong growing vessel. And I want to educate myself better in any capacity that I'm able. With that being said, AmeriCorps, I had tremendous trainings. Children's Defense Fund, I had the luxury of being trained on Alex Haley's farm to talk about what is going on with our kids in America. I, I welcome training, especially send it to me.
Okay, so now I have a connection because I've also trained on Alex Haley's farm. And I do have connection to Arkansas too, so.
Did you get a chance to meet Marion Wright Edelman?
I, I got to meet Marion Wright Edelman. I was a servant leader intern for the Freedom School. And.
Connections with her now, so.
And that really, you know, that just poured gasoline on my fire for serving and for education. Because education is the one thing that no one can take from any of us.
How do you prevent personal conflicts from kind of getting into the mix in your work as a school board member, once you become a school board member?
That's a good question. I think that you have to go into this knowing that there are people on the board that are absolutely going to be coming from opposite sides, maybe, of thought than I am. And there's nothing wrong with that necessarily because it takes all of us. It takes all of us to come together and, and use those talents differently. I cannot let my personal feelings get in the way of the kids' education. And that is something that we tuck outside of the door before we walk into that board meeting. And I will pick that suitcase right back up when I walk out.
I love the way you said that.
Okay, then what responsibility do board members or the board have regarding the evaluation of the superintendent?
We definitely, well, number one, we have to trust the person that we put into that position. And I've met Dr. Owa, and I'm excited about him serving as a superintendent. But we also do have to make sure that he does what he says he's going to do. You know, we have to make sure that he's also listening to our concerns. And data, data is going to help us make sure that that is happening. And we just have to hold all of ourselves accountable.
Do you have any more questions?
Uh, yeah, I have two more.
Okay, go ahead with your.
I'm sweating. I just want y'all to know that I'm sweating right now. I'm the only person, but come on with it.
You're good, you're doing a great job. What is the most important responsibility of the school board? I think you answered a few of those questions. You talked about our children. But what is, what is the most, the most important responsibility of the school board?
I believe the most important responsibility, like I said, is to be representatives and advocates of the community. We cannot be in there with our own agendas. Everything that we do has to be representative of what our community is asking for and needs.
I think Quammy asked that already, but it's okay to re-ask that question because we have a few new people.
Right, but we have one more question that we're going to ask, then we're going to open it up for the community to ask you questions.
Okay. I'll take my glasses off for that.
Go ahead with your last question.
What, what are the leadership responsibilities of school board members? You answered some of those questions. We want you to kind of pull out a little bit more, sort of, you know, dig in there and let us know a few more things that you think that the responsibilities are of school board members.
Definitely, there is that one responsibility is to learn the ins and outs of the school system. You have to know what it's like inside a class. I keep saying this, but it's so important. You have to know what it's like inside a classroom without the proper things that you need for the students to be successful. You have to know what that's like. You have to know what it's like if the bubblers are only coming up this much and the water is brown. You have to, you really have to take the time to know from the teacher's point of view, the student's point of view, the parents, and then the taxpayers. I think that we have to be honest. I, I have to be someone out here in the community that people can approach. I have to measure and maintain a certain integrity about myself so that the people in, in our community know that they can trust me. And again, I have to be the change that I seek and I have to be an example of what I want to see more of.
Before we open it up, I have one suggestion for you. One thing that I found that is vitally important for any local elected official is to be well-versed in parliamentary procedures. So I'm encouraging you to get training in that and get you a copy of Robert's Rules of Order as you prepare for your taking office.
Thank you for that.
All right, let's go ahead and open this up. Everyone can turn on their microphones and their cameras now. And as you lift your hand, we'll call on you. You can lift your hand either on the camera or use the emoji. And then you can go ahead and ask your question.
Don't be shy.
Okay, people are not turning on their microphones. Okay, we have Reginald, please turn on your, turn on your microphone and your camera and ask your question.
Good evening, everyone. Let me get into some light.
Or if you can't turn on your camera, at least your microphone will be great. Or you can put it in the chat and we'll ask.
No, so, once again, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Quaming Clarice, for hosting. I do appreciate you, Theresa, for showing up like you have. My question is simple. Jacksonville School District just was released from desegregation overview, the same as PCSSD. Do you have any thoughts about it in light of, I guess, in light of our new administration that's coming on? That's my question.
That's a great question, Reggie. I have to say that the, the fact that we even had to have the desegregation thing is, is something that really spiked my interest in the first place. What do I think about it being disbanded and the fact that an elementary school that was promised to be built still has not been built? Uh, I would like to go forward and make sure that we are being accountable and that the board does what they say they're going to do. And moving forward, that we don't go backwards, that we continue to move forward. Segregation has no place in 2021. This last year has shown that. And if we want healthy, educated, happy students, then we're going to start with equality everywhere and bringing up our scores, like I said. All, all I can do is make sure that I call out things as I see it and I will be a person of integrity for this board.
You mentioned the school was promised but not built. What is your position on that school not being built? And what are you planning to do once elected, as far as that's concerned?
Well, I noticed that the school that was not built has also some of the poorest students in our district. And that's concerning to me, especially when you were just released from desegregation. How did that happen? What's going on? Those are the questions that I'm going to be asking, you know, on the board. What are we doing to hold ourselves accountable for this? And that is very important to me. We have to do what we say we are going to do. Especially when we're talking about the amount of money that Jacksonville has been given for these schools. So all I can tell you is that I'm very passionate about that and I have lots of questions myself.
We have a hand raised from Jasmine. Go ahead, Jasmine.
Good evening, everyone. And please, please excuse me as I'm, I'm driving, but I certainly, I did not want to miss being able to engage with the candidates. So I'm going to keep my. um, being able to engage with the candidates. So I'm gonna keep my, my, uh, my photo up right now.
Please be here.
Theresa, what would be your, uh, upon getting elected and, you know, getting acclimated to the position and going through training and everything? What would be your first and second, so I'm sure that you, you have quite a few, would be your first and second order of business? Where are the, the top two, uh, things on your list that you, you want to go into upon being elected?
Well, one thing for sure, those reading scores, that reading support, like I said, I, it's just, it's, it, it's necessary for our kids to, to succeed. And it's our right as people to know how to read well and understand information that is given to us. That is, that's something that's very important to me as a mother, as a grandmother, as a community member. My second order of business oddly is what is going on with this, with this school? What is going on with the promises that, that we made? And, 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 and I'm not afraid to ask those tough questions. And, um, I look forward to getting some answers.
Jasmine, are you finished with your question?
Well, that was, that was all of, but you, you mentioned something important, which is that literacy piece. And something that, um, I've recently been made aware of as a, a formal, uh, former Our Kids Read employee. When I was working there, we were in all of the schools in Jacksonville, all of the elementary schools. And I've been made aware recently, um, that we're not, well, they are not in all of the schools. And it was no longer a requirement, but just a, a request. And if the schools wanted them to be there, um, they could be. However, if they didn't, then they weren't. And so, as a school board member, how would you address the literacy issues from, from a partnership point of view? From having different organizations and, um, individuals that can, can assist with, with building our, our students' literacy skills? Where would you stand on that being something to be optional or inviting other individuals in or other companies and organizations in that could help not only with our literacy rates, but as it pertains to mentorship, as it pertains to social emotional learning? Um, just all of those vital components that we need. However, you also mentioned, you know, our teachers have a lot to do. And so some of that, it, you know, it's gonna require some outside entities to be involved. So where do you stand on involving outside entities in our school district? As well as just how you feel about that in general?
Um, Jasmine, that's a great, uh, and, and strong question. Um, it, it, as a school board member, um, I, and as a former teacher assistant in, 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 in a public school, support, reading support is necessary and, um, just coming from my viewpoint, it, it can't be optional. If our kids are not at the, the, at least the state level of reading, it should be, in my opinion, mandatory that you get these supportive services so that we can help get you to where you need to be, to be a phenomenal person ready for tomorrow. I support using the resources we have in this city, in this city of Jacksonville. We have a wonderful reading program, AR reading. Why wouldn't we use that to support? Why would we call out somebody in Texas or somewhere else when we can use our own community right here? We have the resources. That's one thing that I, I, I stand on is if we have these resources in our community, we should be using each other first and then, you know, go outside. We have to use these resources that we have. And I am all for that. Did that answer your question, Jasmine? I'm sorry.
Yes, that does. And, and thank you. Um, thank you for answering as well as, um, just being present and, and, and engaging, engaging with us on some of these questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a question, Theresa. You mentioned finances three times. Have you, uh, gotten a copy of the current budget of this school district?
Um, I, I don't have a copy of the current budget. However, I went to the last school board meeting and I have been, um, flicking over the previous meetings. I also was asked recently about, um, seventeen million, um, I guess is supposed to be coming in when, and we haven't even done this school yet. So I have to mention finances because I'm a new homeowner in Jacksonville. They affect me. They affect my neighbors. It affects, like I said, the kids and the support services that they deserve. And, um, the financial piece is important. We can't get greedy. We can't get, uh, comfortable in how we're spending this money. This is our community's money. This isn't the board's money. This isn't the superintendent's money. This is our money. And we all have to be a part of making sure we get what we need out of it.
Indeed, indeed.
Anyone else have a question for Ms. McClendon?
I love the beach and long walks in the park. Anyone who's wondering that.
Is there any question that has not been asked that you wish was asked?
Or that you'd like to?
Or that you just like to address?
Oh, Jasmine.
Oh, Jasmine raised her hand again. So, hey, put a, put a clock in there for a second and we're gonna go back to Jasmine. Jasmine, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. I, I remembered one more. You have to excuse me as I'm trying to, uh, recall certain questions and multitask and be a safe driver.
Please be safe.
So, a question, and this is not necessarily, this is just, I just want to preface it with this. This is a question that I, I remember being asked, uh, when, when I attempted to run a few years ago. And at the time, I felt like it was not necessarily relevant. However, I understand it's relevant to other people. And so, because I just wanted to make sure I, I put that out there. It's not necessarily my question, but it's something that wasn't addressed. So, um, do, well, do you have any students that attend, do you have children that attend any of the schools in Jacksonville?
I do not. Um, I have a four-year-old granddaughter that, um, my daughter's deciding if she's gonna, uh, come and live here and have her start here or if she's gonna stay in Mo- in Milwaukee and finish her schooling. But let me just say this because, um, I've heard from other, other, uh, I've heard from the community a little bit. You're not from Jacksonville. Uh, you don't have any kids right in, in the school right now. And what I say to that is, the kids in my neighborhood are my kids. I'm looking out for those kids and making sure that they're safe. The police laws that happen, those are to my kids and my community members because this community is my family. Anything that goes on in Jacksonville is a part of me because this is where I have set down my roots to stay. And, um, I also would like to say, my family is from Pine Bluff, Arkansas. My grandfather was a sharecropper. My father and his sister were the first two to go to, uh, school that was not segregated. And, and, and they picked cotton in this state. And my grandfather was told what to buy from, from the market and what he couldn't buy, how many beans he can get and what he couldn't. And when I made the choice to come and start my life in Arkansas, I brought with me every story my family and my grandfather told me. And I'm walking in Jacksonville on these streets with my ancestors and with the understanding that it is my job to help make wherever I am a better place. And that is what I'm gonna do.
Beautiful. Thank you so very much.
That's another thing we haven't come to, Theresa.
All right, see, we have to do lunch or something.
The sharecropping and the delta.
Tanya, you have, uh, you had your hand up momentarily. Uh, are you trying to?
Tanya, were you clapping or did you have a question?
That was, that was meant to be a high five.
All right, well, high five.
But I will just say that I have known Theresa for twenty years. Um, both of us, single parents, supporting each other and, um, AmeriCorps members. And I, she would, she would be such a blessing to any board, seriously, because, um, she's just all in for kids. She always has been and she always will be.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, uh, we saw, saw Amanda just came in. Amanda, what we're doing is we're having a conversation with, uh, the, Jacksonville North Pulaski School Board candidates that showed up for this forum. Uh, Teresa McClendon, uh, is the one that showed up. And right now, we're having just a community discussion. So, uh, anyone that has a question of, uh, this, uh, candidate for, uh, political, for public office, excuse me, uh, please raise your hand and ask so that you can get your que- question answered. Okay, Amanda just said, hold on, thank? Oh, just listen. All right.
Sorry to hear that.
You get well, Amanda. Take care of yourself. Is there anyone else that has a question? Okay. Well?
Well, um, Theresa, did you, did you, um, did you, were you able to, I know we said to put a pin in, in the question that we asked at, and after, before Jasmine had her very important question for you. We, we asked, um, what question or what would you like to leave us with? Like if you were to ask, if you were asked a question and of importance and whatever question that is to come to your mind and we didn't ask it, what would you like to answer? Like what would you like to tell us? What would you like the community to know?
What do we need to know about you and about your?
Um, I think I started with let, just letting you know my background and where I'm coming from. Um, I also want you to know that, um, it takes kind of a, uh, it's not the easiest thing in the road to move somewhere new and, and become acquainted. I will say that the people of Jackson.
Theresa, you're muted again. Or maybe.
Theresa, we can't hear you. We can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me still?
There you go.
Okay. Um, I never saw a community even coming from the city that gives so much to each other. Um, food, clothes. Um, if your animal is sick, there's a website here where somebody will help you take care of your sick animal. And that is what attracts me and, and keeps me excited about where I live and being here in Jacksonville. And all I want to do is support my town, my city and make it better. And I promise you that if you elect me for Zone Four, then I'm gonna make you proud and you will be heard.
The way you just described Jacksonville sounds like a TV show.
It's so, I love it. I just love how the people are willing to help.
Jacksonville, Arkansas.
Theresa, how can, how can people reach out to you? What is your email address and how could the community?
I, I will put that in my, in the messages right here for anyone. I also have a Facebook page, um, like Theresa McClendon for, uh, Jacksonville, North Pulaski School District. Feel free to go on there. Um,
You could provide that information in the chat.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, one last time. Does anybody have any questions to ask our candidate? Before we close it out. And we'll, we'll wait until she puts that in chat before we close it out. So people have an opportunity, uh, to get it.
And I'm gonna also leave my phone number.
Please, please do.
Because just call me. If you just want to talk community, my fiancee might be getting sick of me talking community all night long. So I might need somebody.
You're muted again, Theresa.
All right, here we go. All right, so her information is in the chat. Her email address is sunzshinelvr@gmail.com. Telephone number is four one four three zero six zero zero three three. I'll, I'll leave this up for just a couple of, about a minute for you guys that need to write it down. And definitely reach out to her. Uh, we definitely have to support the candidates who, uh, feel that the community is valuable enough to show up when they're invited to these type of events. Uh, and Theresa did show up. Uh, so we thank her for doing that. Uh, and, uh, prayerfully, uh, we will definitely see the, uh, the meaningful results of that. So, uh, we want to thank, uh, the Jacksonville NAACP uh, for sponsoring this, uh, candidate forum. Uh, the Jacksonville, uh, branch of the NAACP here in Little Rock is the hardest-working NWC branch in this state, if not this region, if not the country. There is always something going on at this branch. So if you do not know, better ask somebody. I want to give, uh, one of our, uh, branch VPs, uh, Reginald Ford, an opportunity to say something to close us out.
Okay.
Reginald. Sorry, just trying to get my stuff straight. So, uh, again, Kwame and Clarice, um, um, I think you guys are amazing, uh, moderators. The sentiments about us being just that good as a branch is, uh, appreciated, but we, there's some pretty tough branches out there. I think more than anything, um, as I was listening to, and I, I'm sure folks on the call, uh, the way Ms. Theresa Clinton answered her questions, it, um, made me think, uh, she's more, uh, council, council member position, uh, she's just, her question, her answers were just so remarkable and it's refreshing when you see somebody that really has a love for. She's just, her question, her answers were just so remarkable and it's refreshing when you see somebody that really has a love for a community and to be a transplant. So that's pretty amazing. Uh, but uh lastly, I would say this, I think uh what you said Kwame was that uh she should have the support because she uh is qualified and she showed up.
Yes.
Showing up is half the battle.
Yes.
Other people um can make all kind of reasons and I'm not gonna uh bemoan them, but I do know that you have to show up and she did show up and she answered our questions. And I would ask everybody that's owned here to consider um supporting her if you don't. And it's just, I'm just saying this, it's just Reginald Ford. Uh, then she's just, seems like an amazing candidate and she deserves our uh respect for running. And um if we are in her ward, possibly our vote. So everyone here, thank you very much to the education committee, to moderators and uh the one candidate that, that did show up, Ms. Teresa McClendon. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you very.